This reflects the additional securities we've purchased recently?
Yeah. The treasuries.
That's right.
Jim, what number are you? What number is Jim, Michael?
Six, the Finance Committee report.
They're in your report?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna go right to that once we do, okay. Good morning. Christmas is over and we're moving right into, back to work. We hope everyone had a good holiday at home. I'm gonna begin by calling, this is our December 26th, it's 9:30 in the morning, meeting. A call order. Beginning with this meeting and going forward on, we will begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like to ask all, everyone in the room to please stand, face the flag, and... Repeat after me, I guess. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm gonna just quickly confirm our future meeting dates. The board will meet again on January 9th, 2019, and January 23rd, 2019, to follow our normal schedule. On January 27th will be a joint meeting with the Park Commissioners and the Planning Board regarding the Milton Village and Woffery, which has been part of the master plan implementation... Two years, Katie?
Yes.
At least, yeah, two years. And that'll, that one, that meeting will be at the Council on Aging at 7:00 PM. Item four, approval of minutes. We have just some minutes for September 26th, 2018.
So, Mr. Chair, can we defer these minutes? I just saved them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There are some edits on them.
Be on today? Do we defer until later? Yeah.
If we go to a later date.
Very good. Do we have anyone here for Citizen Speak? Seeing no one, I'm gonna move right along to item six, where this morning we are joined by our Town Treasurer, Jim McAuliffe, and Rich Rogers from Abbey Capital. Correct?
Correct.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, Michael, the Finance Committee just introduced...
Oh, sure, absolutely, absolutely. I defer to...
Melinda and I are the board's Finance Committee, along with our Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy, and our Town Accountant, Amy Dexter. And we've had two meetings with the Town Treasurer, Jim McAuliffe, about this good idea that he brought to our attention, and also with Mr. Richard Rogers of Abbey Capital, regarding possibly expanding the range of investments that the town could invest certain trust funds in. And Melinda and I may want to speak to this, just to give a little bit more detail on what the committee has been talking about, either before or after. I don't know if there's anything Melinda may want to add, or we could maybe speak to it after.
Sure.
Jim and Rich, give a presentation.
Whatever you wanna do.
This essentially relates to the submission of a warrant article for the annual town meeting.
Currently, all our investments have to be on the legal list. And right now, it's not at 22 stocks. They keep dumping stocks off the list, they never add to it anymore. So, our choices are getting limited. So, we just want to expand it a little bit by going with the prudent investor rule, but just bring it back to the S&amp;P 100. So, we don't want to go full-on prudent investor, we just want a better range of stocks, so we can hit different sectors.
Sure. Throughout the last 25 years or so, I've modified the legal list in Massachusetts many times. Number of times I've tried to eliminate the legal list and go prudent man, prudent investor rule across, for everyone across the state. I found that very, very difficult. And even recently, I've tried to work with people at the State House to simply go to prudent investor rule and then narrow it back down to the S&amp;P 100. So, we have 22 stocks to pick from for the last 25 years managing funds. This will increase the list to 122 stocks, but there's many stocks, 22, of those 22 stocks, the many are on the S&amp;P 100. So, we're really adding about 115, 116 total stocks to pick from. It's just simply a way to diversify the funds. Many sectors right now are not even represented with those 22 stocks. And with the S&amp;P 100, I'm pretty much hitting all sectors and able to diversify up to 95% of the S&amp;P 500. The list is kept by Standard and Poor's, so every year it's modified by a reputable, well-known organization. It's not Rich Rogers or anyone coming up with the, the list of what we can pick from. Five years ago, four years ago, I presented this to the City of Peabody, and they thought this is a great idea, the mayor thought it was a great idea. We went through multiple meetings with their selectmen and their city council, they approved it 100%, said, "We definitely want to do this." They brought in Joan Lovely and Mr. Spiliotis, and they actually got it through, approved as a warrant, and went through the State House, and was signed by both reps, senators, and the governor. So, there is precedent. I don't think they would have any issue with, you know, the town of Milton, which is qualified finance people, to make this decision, to actually get it through the State House for the town of Milton, because there is precedent, it's working very well. This is really the only way to do it. I've tried to do it as a blanket approach, I didn't get anywhere, I would've had to hire a law review up at the State House. It wasn't gonna, no one really had that much of an interest. So, they kinda gave me the advice, every community, Rich, that wants to do it, you can approach them individually, if they want to do it, they can actually get it approved through the State House. So, that's the approach we're using at this point. So, I have decades of experience trying to get other things done through the State House for this exact approach, or even a bigger, a more open approach, and it really hasn't transpired. Tony Legavone, Concord, has tried a number of times. Beth Clapp, Vice, used to be the Treasurer of Reading, has tried many times, it never really ultimately went through.
As you say, on the Mass Treasurers Association, every year they propose the prudent investor rule, it gets to the State House and it just dies there. And they, they bring it up every year, and it just dies there, because the way they look at it, they don't want somebody out in Western Mass that's a treasurer five hours a week investing funds for a town, you know, without the expertise or getting help from somebody. So, that's the reason why they don't do the full-on prudent investor rule.
Really?
And I was told that it was really not going to happen, even though it gets through the reps and the senators, and then it just never gets signed, and it always goes to like, whatever, I think is a December 31st, or it just never happens. And they said it's really never going to happen, my understanding. So... Every town can do it, you know? For a town, it's harder than a city, because there's town meeting members, my understanding is that they have to all vote, whereas a city, it's just the city council approving it. Right now, there's a City of Lemonster, City of Greenfield, Greenfield's a little further ahead than some of my other municipalities, Stonem, there's a number of people that want to do this. It's just, everyone's very, very busy. It's been on the, you know, on the planning schedule for the last couple of years, but no one's really, Milton's been really making an effort here to follow through on this. And it's a common sense approach, when you think about it. There's nothing that's, I think, aggressive in any way, shape, or form. It actually reduces the risk of the overall portfolio by, you know, we only really get to choose from consumer stocks and drug companies right now. And those have been in favor for five years. Ultimately, they will go out of favor, you know, and some of the other sectors will come in favor, and our performance will lag. So, it enables us to manage the funds where you can overweight certain areas and pull back, and actually diversify the funds a little bit.
Similarly to how an individual could.
Exactly, but we're only at 115 stocks. They're the largest companies in the world, but you're right. I mean, I loved, I actually would like the prudent investor rule, but, you know, Bill Aragon, all the people at the state, you know, the people that are involved, don't really want to, you know, give that blanket approval. You know, Newton has the prudent investor rule straight up, Concord has been using the prudent investor rule, I managed their funds for many years, but I'm held first liable, as far as going off the legal list, and they were doing that a bunch of times, and these people were substantially more qualified than I was. However, we all kinda came to the conclusion that, you know, if I'm gonna start buying Lucent way back when, you know, that maybe they should, they moved their account to like Schwab, now it's at Bank of America, so...
So, this is leading up to your town meeting article?
Well, the Finance Committee is putting forward to this board for consideration, an article that's been drafted by town council. Finance Committee liked this proposal, asked town council to draft a warrant article. He's given us a draft that's in the package, there's a couple of type, there's a typo in it, there's, we've also need to ask him whether we should change board of selectmen to select board, even though the legislation's pending before the Attorney General at this point. And yes, and the other one is to, whether we should actually add in the statutory citation to the prudent investor rule.
Come back and...
But this is essentially the text of it, it may just be a matter of some cleanup changes and adding in a statutory citation.
There wouldn't be anything material, so I would have no problem if that's being up a serious day.
You want to do it today?
I, that's, that's my understanding of what you're...
Yeah, the committee is, committee is recommending that the full board submit this article to town meeting, subject to some minor changes that we may need to ask town council to look at.
We did bring this in front of the cemetery board, they approve it.
I just, for me, looking at the fact that we're a town with a structural deficit, anything that we can do to take really good care of our trust funds, really is, I mean, that is what we owe the residents and the town as a whole, because the town will be here long after we will. So, that, for me, is really important, and I don't feel that the current system is prudent, and our hands are tied to it, so...
And also with the Governor's Stone Fund, I mean, you get $5.3 million, which you like to put in play, that's there for the long term.
I agree. I've said this, Katie knows, going back to when we first got it, which is, we were three in person going, two years ago.
Well, and I think there are two other things. I think that we, we're, it's particularly felicitous, because we're already working with Richard, and so, and he's done this successfully a number of times. And, you know, we're already involved with S&amp;P as our bonding agent, and so, and just reading up on this too, that will put us also in a better position for, for bonding and keeping our AAA rating, because we'll have, we'll have a little bit of ability to change with the market as it changes.
Want to make a motion?
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
And it's maybe to Rich, or maybe to someone else here. What's the increased level of risk, if any, when you go from the legal list, legal list to the S&amp;P 100?
I would think you'd be substantially reducing it. Because right now, like in 2008 and '09, we went down to like 4.5% in equities, that's the only way I could protect it getting destroyed by the market in '08, '09. Right now, we've gone down to 6.5% in equities. You know, I don't think we've ever had a down year for the town of Milton. I didn't, as of Friday, I was flat, and now I'm off 0.44%, so I have till Monday, because it's, so, the only way to reduce with 22 equities, getting hit by sectors that are out of favor, is just reduce it, reduce it, reduce it, back to where I am now. I probably would be about 15, 16% in equities, if not higher, so like maybe 20% equities if I could diversify with those other 100 stocks. So, I think you're actually, I think by far you're reducing your risk, because with 22 stocks that are, in sectors that are out of favor, I really know where to go. So, sometimes I actually even hold on to stocks I really don't want to hold on to, because I'm, because I have nowhere to go if I liquidate them, and no one's that bright that you can, you know, really eliminate your equity positions, you know, because the market will do usually opposite of what the majority thinks. So, it would give, give us the ability to actually diversify the funds, reduce risk and volatility.
So, it makes you fight like a defensive game the whole way, with no way to find an offense, like no, nowhere to go?
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty happy that we're down to 6.4%, and I saw, you know, Procter and Gamble write the other, last week, and that was, but it's, it's a, it's a hard way to go, whereas Peabody felt much better, you know, I always feel better about it, because it gives me an opportunity to actually diversify the funds.
I asked that same question, Finance Committee and Rich, and Melinda and Jim brought that point out, but, Rich, do you want to just add on to that and give the example of GE, because I think you told us GE is on the legal list.
Yeah, GE is one of the 22 stocks on the legal lists. And that's actually, you know, it's funny, I was thinking to myself, what a mistake that's been, but you know what, it's, it's, that's a difficult one, because, you know, doing this for many 26 years, and I've spent, and I've owned it myself, spending an absurd amount of hours researching GE, that's a little more unforeseen, you can't really, you know, you didn't see that coming, so, not that it's fraud, but it's, you know, that's a, it's not like an economic decision, they were saying certain things up until two months ago, and then threw everything out the window, and then things coming out of the woodwork, and so you're now caught in a situation, so you're right. If I had 100 stocks, GE would be a much smaller, it is a pretty damn small position we have, it's $24,000 out of an $11.5 million account, because it's actually gotten hammered so much that that's why it's really 25 grand. But it's, you're right, I'm kinda, I kinda hang on to it, because I, there's not too many else to do, and I think, you always think it's going to rebound based upon what they've told us, you know, as far as earnings and where the company stands with their assets. We just don't know what the liabilities are, to tell you the truth.
Well, and I think that points to another point that you've both made, which is, nobody is actually looking at the legal list.
At this point, certainly, you're right.
In, in the way that some people are looking at the S&amp;P 100.
That's right, no, definitely not.
Looking at companies around, so you just have a different kind of set of eyes on the S&amp;P 100 that, that, you know, we're not able to have with the 22 legal list.
Exactly.
And just one related question, how often do you rebalance to do it? I mean, is there any set timeframe?
Well, our target is 20% in equities, 70% fixed income, 10% money markets. And as market changes, you know, conditions change, right now with 90% fixed income, very short, so I don't even have unrealized, too many unrealized losses in the short end. And then 6.4% equities, 4.5% money market. Money markets don't pay that much at all, so you want to get it in, you know, two, or three treasuries, which pay over 2.5%. So, there's our target, there's where we are. So, it's really just, the goal is to not lose money, and it be positive every year, that's my mission.
You can't use losses like an individual, right?
You don't pay taxes on gains, or you don't get the benefit of the loss. Right now, we have a decent-sized gain that I took a week and a half, two weeks ago, with Procter and Gamble and Unilever, and so, that shows as a realized gain, that will kick up the income substantially, but I do have one loser, which is GE, and I'm debating on, so that's one loser. But, you know, I think it's a high likelihood it goes up from here. I'm kinda convinced now that it's not going to Chapter 11.
He spends a lot of time trying to convince me it's not gonna go down anymore.
For their investment in this area of the country, we better hope they don't, as well.
It's a big deal. We've researched Culp though, the new CEO, pretty extensively, and people that have worked for him for 20 years, and he is legit, and when he says he's going to do something, he's been successful doing it consistently in the past with Dana Hurd. So, the people work directly underneath him, we've talked to them directly, and he's like, if he says he's gonna turn it around, he's, he's not gonna throw his reputation on the bus, so I think we're gonna have some upside in that stock, as you go over the next six months to a year. So, that's why I don't sell it. I was almost going to sell it, simply because I didn't know really, you can't figure it out, so...
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Anyone make a motion?
All of that we submit to the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting, a warrant article relating to giving the treasurer the authority to invest trust funds in the S&amp;P 100, and we, well, we seek special legislation authorizing the treasurer to invest trust funds in the S&amp;P 100.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you all for your work on this. Thank you very much.
All right, sounds good.
I'd like to thank the treasurer, the Finance Committee, I'd like to thank the Treasurer, Jim McAuliffe, for bringing this Finance Committee's attention.
Happy New Year.
I'll see you guys soon.
Hope the rest of the day's quiet? No. Okay, and I go right to, someone, do seven and eight together, discussion of May 29th town meet, oh no, starts with May town meet. So, obviously, there's one, we're gonna have, is anyone have anything else today that they want to touch on? Just going through the list here of... I do think jumping to...
I had one, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I believe Town Moderator, Bob Hiss, wanted to present the town meeting article regarding...
To us?
Yeah. Is it the language in, in Article Two, in the annual town meeting, that he believed might be outdated?
Of the Legislative Committee?
Legislative Committee, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, you want to put it on for the ninth, or the 20th, or either one?
Ninth would work, yep.
Anybody, anything else? Good, for now.
I, I would just, if we're gonna do...
What are we doing, actually? I'm confused, what are we doing?
We're on seven, just the May 19...
Oh, okay, yeah. Got it, thanks.
You got something like that?
Oh, just on the, on the eight, really?
I'm gonna jump to eight, I'm not gonna, if I'm gonna finish seven, then go to eight. So, if we're done with seven, I'm gonna move to eight, which is discussion approved, the 2019 special town meeting calls, I just want to jump down to traffic impact mitigation, we all got an email on that, I did talk to the Chair of the Planning Board, that may be getting moved out to, because I don't think they're gonna have enough time to work through, to meet our timeline, so that one, and then... I'm open to, I'll open the floor, any discussion, any of the others, we can go through them one at a time, whoever you want to...
Wait, I was writing a note, which one, who's not gonna be able to get to us?
Number four.
Traffic, that's what I thought you said.
If they could, they might make it, but I, after talking, I don't think they're gonna have enough time to make it.
Good, thank you.
And...
That's what I thought you said.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
I can touch on fire building committee, but I'll go last. Kitter, as we know, is coming, I know that the warrant committee's still gonna have some questions on that.
On Kitter, do we, do we need the trustees to come back in? I mean, they came in once and talked to us, do we...
I mean, we know where they're at, I, I'm, my bigger issue is, and, did we, did I just... I saw there was a news story about a potential interest in someone buying it. Didn't we just get a recent email on Kitter as well?
We did, the church, the church.
Right.
Yeah. And this Discovery School.
Discovery School has...
Has an interest in buying it.
Right.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead, while I...
Well, so, I guess my question is, it would be good to, I mean, they were asking for money, basically, right? Discovery School House was saying, "We don't have the funds, because we've been too busy meeting our mission," which is understandable, but, so, I don't know, I'm just wondering what we should be, you know, what, what would be useful to do, what steps to take, and one of those is, do we meet with the warrant committee when the trustees go back in? Should we be there, or should someone be there?
Well, I think they're gonna ask your opinion, as they did last time, you, I think you and I would...
Yeah, last Monday's warrant committee, they asked specifically if the town has exhausted their efforts in looking at it, and I believe we have, right? I've touched all departments in, in town government, walked it, myself and the Chair walked it with Chair of the Parks Commission, Regina Mally, some time ago, and the warrant committee wanted to hear from us, or from this board, or me, about if the town has, has or any need for it. And I think we've exhausted those efforts.
Yeah, I mean, other than looking at, you know, one of these other entities that's already using it, or, I mean, the Affordable Housing Trust has talked about trying to get a developer, we don't, I mean, there's nothing that's ready and in place.
Are we, are we planning to have a substantive discussion about the articles, or just whether to submit, whether to include them in the special town meeting? I thought it was just whether we were gonna include these in the special town meeting.
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
That's my, but to Melinda's point, I think, and I hear this a lot, I think the lingering issue is, I understand that the library trustees, and I understand they're right as well, it's their building, they want to sell it, but as we've heard from the warrant committee, I've heard from residents, okay, sell it, but can we sell it in a way that somehow we benefit the community? Beyond financial, like the neighborhood, can, can, I just, I'd love to see them create some type of vision in their RFQ, or their RF, whatever they go out for, that, whether it's affordable housing, something that goes there, that is amenable to the community. And I, I'm not exactly sure how we could do that.
Yeah.
But, and I think they're gonna hear that when they go back to the warrant committee. I do think they'll hear that again, that's my only, I mean, I'm willing to sit and talk to John, I, I get where they're at on this, but I still think if you could create a vision or something that would truly benefit that neighborhood and the community in doing so, in doing this, I think it would be a much easier fly through town meeting.
I think the challenge is that they have to maximize...
Yes.
The benefit of that asset for the library, whereas others like our board, the Affordable Housing Trustees, others may want to try to craft a vision for it, or come up with a proposal that could reuse it.
Right, and I think, you know, we're probably free, actually, to answer that RFQ.
Yes.
Aren't we? So, yeah, I just, I guess my, my, my real question was, hey, what do we do this time? Because we know from, actually, that great report that, that the library trustees sent us, about every step and every person they talked to. And then Town Administrator Dennehy's been out there, just double-checking and making sure, and I, I'd like to see it actually make it into the warrant at this point, and if people have visions, I think it's incumbent upon us and them to, to come and answer through that process, because that, it is taking resources from the town. I, I mean, it does cost us money, right, to have that building, so...
So, I'm right.
Yeah.
Okay, bond premium is an easy one, that's definitely going, great estates, PUD is a planning board article, and that's a change that, it's a pretty simple one, I don't think there'll be any issues with that. Kitter, again, is one of the Fire Station Building Committee, and I know Finance Committee met after the capital improvement committee met, we had a, as the town administrator knows, we had a pretty in-depth discussion at Capitol last Wednesday, on the Fire Station Building Request for 2.7 for this special town meeting. There's definitely some agita to describe, just overdoing that, but there's also the thought that if we didn't get it approved, in what, the vision of the 2.7, that perhaps part of this could fall off, the radar would never get done. And I get that, and I support that. The bigger issue that the capital improvement committee is gonna have to work out and come back to this board with is finding the place marks where they're going to be. It's clear that they're gonna need $600,000 in '19, how 2021, '22 go, working out, because the, and the other big issue is, they're still not home yet for Engine Two, and he smelled it, that's, that's the one that, and going back to the fear part of it was that, basically, because if they have the design, they know what they need for size, is that somehow it falls off the radar and never, and you heard, never gets done. They've done a ton of work, I don't want to see that happen. So, I do think we're gonna want to bring them in, Ian and Amy, I said this to you, Michael, to kinda see what Amy comes up with for place marks, as to the years when monies are drawn to fund that towards that 2.7, but the thought, and I, I said this to the Chair, Brian Walsh, don't think that this is going to February, and March 1st, you have 2.7, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work. So, I think Amy's gonna talk to John Flynn today about how to craft the language of it, so that it just create, this creates the place marks, but the drawdowns don't actually take, because if you were to try, it's a budget buster, and we just can't let that happen all at one time, so, even though it's going, it's, it's not done yet, it's not done yet. Isn't that all right?
On this, at the last meeting, but I, I think the board already voted to submit, to include, not to submit the article, to include this article in the February warrant. It doesn't look to me as though town council has revised this article at all, it's still, it's an early draft.
Right.
And the deadline is fast approaching, when is the deadline for February, January 2nd or 3rd?
January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Oh, sorry, February is, is January 2nd, annual town meeting is January 3rd.
So, he knows, right?
It should be put into final form at that point, for the warrant committee to be able to really vet this properly.
This has to be exactly right, so Amy was on the phone, I talked to Amy twice on, I'm lost on my days, today's on Friday, she's talking, I mean, she knows this is like a priority, we gotta get this done. We meet again on the 3rd, but I think it has to be done before that, so, I'm confident they can get it done, it's just how they, how they do it. Go ahead, Michael.
So, I, I know we voted to have a special town meeting.
Right.
I don't know that we voted to submit the article, I don't think, I voted to submit an article for 2.7 million, because I have a lot of questions about that amount, to Richard's point, and whether that's the appropriate amount, given the, given the project, and given, given the timeline, and so I have a lot of questions, and hopefully the Fire Building Committee will come in and can, can talk about, you know, why this amount, why now, you know, what's the plan, project plan for determining where Engine Two will go, what's the project plan for determining where Headquarters will go, because I don't think we really know where that's gonna go either. So, so I have a lot of questions about that, and whether it's appropriate now to appropriate 2.7 million, as opposed to a, I'm much in favor of getting going, right? But whether that's, whether we're putting the cart before the horse in terms of that number, that's my question. And hopefully, they'll come in.
So, and why don't we, let's put them on for the 9th, is that, we got too much on. So, two things, I just talking to Bryant Walsh on Sunday, I think we talked. I think, A, on the donation, the answer's gonna be very soon, as soon as like, any day, which is a real game changer. I mean, that's, in everything, from the 2.7, to the whole 25, I mean, that's two, the issues that capital's facing right now on the, this is a big budget buster. Is that, and am I using the term, you can tell me where I go wrong in this, Michael, is that there's a equipment purchase that took place in '18?
In August of this past year, we bonded $11 million worth of stuff. Included in that was the fire truck from fiscal 215, that got included in that. Rather than it be
A 15.
A 15-year useful life, it turns out, that it was actually bonded at three years, because we had a couple of bans in place. That's a severe impact, both on the ability for the Capital Improvement Committee to bond certain projects, and as an operating expenditure, large operating expenditure in the next three fiscal years to meet that bond payment requirement. In other words, it was supposed to be, instead of getting a 15-year mortgage, we got a three-year mortgage, on a $550,000 fire truck, and a couple of the pieces of public works equipment. So, that, that's a potential problem for the operational budget this year.
So, to your point, that creates additional pressure, like, that was not expected at all, that I didn't know, none of us knew of. Amy found it on everything, on the operational budgets going into next year.
Correct.
One of the things that I had said to Michael, just looking at the finance hits on it, like, could we pay it off? It would almost behoove us? Like, if you had, it'd be like having a credit card, that all of a sudden you looked at it, and instead of having 5%, it was 25%, and you're like, oh, like, so could you pay it off? And Amy's not sure, but she's checking with John Flynn to see if that's one way we could go, to just take some free cash and put it together, because it's, it's a potential budget buster. And it not only impacts the 2, it impacts everything. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, the town administrator and the accountant brought this to the Finance Committee at our meeting last week.
She did, okay.
We had an initial conversation about it, whether free cash might be appropriate, and we'll probably have a follow-up conversation about it, too, as we go along. But to come back to Mike's point about the article, I mean, usually the way the article's written is to see what sum of money the town will vote, the town will raise, and how the, how the town will raise it. And this article doesn't really do that. That's why it's not in the proper form. And they're just asking for 2.7. But it seems to me that as we go through, we need to hear from the Capital Committee, how they are proposing to finance this. And the warrant committee's gonna wanna hear that as well. So, the article first needs to be in the proper form. And then, there's gonna have to be some real justification from the Capital Committee and the Fire Building Committee, as to what that correct number is.
So, the number that, the minimum number, you can tell me where I go wrong, that we're gonna need for 2019, 600,000. All right?
Yeah, if you were to break the fire building.
Break it down, yeah.
Break it down into six projects, I think between seven, six and $700,000 was the number that, that would suffice that first piece of the design and architecture for the town center area, the headquarters, if you will.
And to Katie's point, I would say the Capital Committee is, has an idea where to get that from, was ready to vote that. But the bigger issue was, they didn't wanna go back to town meeting again. Which is, what I'm saying to you is that, I agree, you can't just say, in its form now, I, because in its form now, it looks like there's 2.7 available the day after the town meeting ends, and that's not the reality of it. So, that's what Amy and John are working on, but it has to be done very quickly. And so, we'll bring Bryant, we'll schedule Bryant for the 9th.
Capital Improvement Committee's coming in on the 9th.
On the 9th as well. So, that's all capital's working on right now, is just that. That's the priority that's all working on.
And just, just to highlight the point, you're right, Richard, on the, on the, when the money gets appropriated. But I think also, there are broader questions about the project itself. Because it seems to me, if we buy into 2.7, given the presentation of the Capital Committee, if we buy into the 2.7 now, we are buying into a timeline that's gonna require an expenditure of between $17 and $20 million in FY '21. And we'll have all three fire stations being built at the same time. So, and I, that may be the right answer, but I haven't seen enough evidence that it is the right answer.
So I do have.
It seems very fast.
I don't, I don't have it, because it's in my capital folder, but Amy does have a pretty good breakdown of how moving it out, as is Tom. And obviously, Article 37 changes it as well.
A breakdown in terms of a timeline, Richard?
Yeah, timeline, yeah. On draws for money and moving.
And cash flow.
Cash flow, yeah. Because you can't, this is, this is the biggest capital thing we've done since the schools. Biggest.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is that without having a, a project manager already in place, it would have been great to have that piece before, because that schedule would, would be, have been created. And so I think, once we have that piece, too, that all the other, all these other things will really be able to fall into place much more easily. And it won't seem so opaque.
Yeah, and they don't have an OPM right now. So, they're kind, they don't have the money for an OPM. So, they're trying to, almost like, do OPM work without being the OPM.
Right, until they get, yeah, so, we need to get that piece done.
Okay. Are we, is that okay on this for now, until the 9th? And until we get, I'd say we're gonna see something before the 9th. Especially, I don't know when you guys meet again, but I did say to Amy to make sure that she keeps.
Yeah.
Because I, I mentioned to Michael, like, the Finance Committee needs to know about this, like, just.
So, we have four articles then, for the 25th of February?
Oh, yeah.
Fire, Kidder.
Kidder, Great Estates, and the bond premium application.
Okay.
That's it. Let me show a good context, but I just don't, that's a lot of work to that. I don't, I don't, I'd be more comfortable with, like, leaning over it, dotting the i's across the t's and bring it. I don't, I don't know if they'd bring it to the end, or I think they might push it out till the fall, because it's a, I, whichever way she wants to go, I'm fine with. Are you okay? Can I?
Oh, can I just, on the, on the Great Estates and the bond premium, and I, and I understand that those are somewhat ministerial, but, but maybe, is Bill Clark or someone gonna come in and just, there's a bug flying here, just to kinda explain what that Great Estates one is. And I think the bond premium, that's, that's a, that's a treasurer's article.
Correct.
And they just come in and just give us a quick explanation.
The bond premium, you wanna explain?
Yeah, so the, the bond premium, yeah. But yeah, we can have someone speak to it.
If you have someone, I just wanna make sure we have enough information to be able to vote it.
The Great Estates is a, is a procedural change, in that the way the, and you can tell me where I go, the way the article was written refers to the street. And the street it was referring to was Canaveral. But in looking at the article now, Carberry Lane is a public way that goes through this, which is gonna have to, require an administrative change to that article, for the way it is, for it to go forward. So, that's the, the one Planning Board's changed. And that one, and I think that was a prudent move on that point. And it's correct, Capitol, it's a public way. And even though you, you're thinking, as you wrote it, you think it can't nab, it didn't delineate it can't nab, so you had to make that change. On the bond premium, Michael, we can do this, this is the 600,000?
$688,000 available. And then it's broken down into increments, where a percentage of it can be used to projects that are five years or longer, 10 years or longer, 15 years or longer, or 30 years or longer. So, the only projects that really meet that 30 years or longer are large developments, like a fire station. Or, it was actually bonded for the public works, work that was done to that back building. But anything below that, you can always use for a longer life. So, the roughly $592,000 could be used to help mitigate some of the problems that were caused with, with the useful life bonding of equipment, which should have been longer.
The problem we're in now. So, having that article, basically gives us 600,000 of available money that we can touch, but not until we pass it, which is why we really want it to go in February, so it's available immediately.
Yeah.
And that's part of the problem, that's, we included that in Amy's scenario, there's free cash, there's this, there's some of that. Finding a route, whether the Henry's money, and I said this to Katie, trying to find a pathway between Amy and John, that we could potentially use whatever's left in the Henry's account, the force account, from the force agreement, to, to use for something. And even if that's one idea, I know Katie had another idea, I'm, I'm open to all of them. I just wanna make sure we can use it, and that helps us with something going forward.
And on the, on the, on the bonding, useful life bonding issue, are we gonna get, see what alternatives are?
Yeah, so there's four or five things. We're talking with Brienne Susal, who works for Unibank. She's our, she puts the stuff together for the treasurer. It was simply an oversight. It, it defaults to five years unless you change that number. So, we're, we're working through some of the solutions, whether we, a municipality has the ability to, to pay a bond off sooner, or a, a specific part of a bond.
To re-bond.
Yeah. And just some alternatives to, to take the impact off of our, so we can strengthen. But Tom Hurley made a very good point, that Capital Improvement Committee has been working actively. In '16, they bonded $7 million worth of stuff. In '18, they bonded $11 million worth of stuff. It's pretty aggressive for a town our size, but it's also done a very good job of replenishing some very outdated equipment. So, Tom's concern is that if, if we have to pump the brakes, we make sure that we get back to that in a year or two. I spoke to Chase Berkeley and most of the department heads, their fleets are looking very good. They could take a pause for a year or two, but wanna make sure, to Tom's point, that we continue that. Because you don't need 30- and 40-year trucks on the road, it's just, it's, it's not prudent. It's, it's something the Capital Improvement Committee looked at, from 30,000 feet. A lot of the capital asks this year, aren't must-haves. But there are some stuff, like Bill Ritchie, taking preventive measure steps that'll end up saving the town money in the long run. And that's the same thing with this equipment. But the fleet, thanks to the Capital Improvement Committee, Warrant Committee, this board, and town meeting, have really replenished the fleet, so that we're in, we're in a much better shape than we were five or six years ago. Copeland Foundation obviously made a huge investment in equipment in the town, and we thank them for that. So, just, if we're gonna hit the pause button for a year or two to, to correct this, and it does correct itself, it's a $200,000 impact for the next couple of years. And then by '23, we're, we're in the same place we were in before, and even much better place. But just to make sure that, in, in our minds, the Capital Improvement Committee and all of the boards that authorize that funding continues with that, that fleet refurbishment.
And I, I think Katie made this observation at the Finance Committee meeting, that having the CFO in place would help us with making sure oversights like this don't happen. Because there are a lot of moving parts that happen in different places within, you know, our town government. And, and having that centralized would be really useful for everyone.
Yeah. It, I mean, Richard sees it, because he's on the Capital Improvement Committee. The spreadsheet that Tom Hurley and that group developed, you know, it's the length of this table, if you keep toggling to the right.
It's gone into its own, I mean, it's, it's just massive. It's just, it's $100 million.
But yes, to answer your question, long-winded, we're looking into options and understanding what we have today, and making sure that we continue that when we, when we catch our breath.
Right, because the, just going one last time to the fire station, that was written by their committee. Seeing through their eyes, not understanding, right, the hurdles, the whole packet, it's going to Melinda's point, the whole packet, so. I, I, for one, sitting on both, it's capital, and I see it totally. So, okay, so, do we wanna approve moving those forward? Can I have a motion to move Fire Station Building Committee, Kidder Library, Great Estates PUD, and the bond premium application forward for the 2019 special town meeting?
This is just to submit an article?
Just to submit an article, yeah.
Second. Did you make the?
I made that as a motion. I'm trying to save their voices, these two.
Yep, I'll second, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Number nine, approval of one-day liquor licenses. We have four, a motion for four, for the Milton Club, December 29th, January 10th, January 12th, and January 16th.
I move to approve the following one-day liquor licenses. The Milton Club for December 29th, 2018, for a private family gathering. The Milton Club for January 10th, 2019, for the Physicians Club of Dorchester. The Milton Club for January 12th, 2019, for the Morales Wedding Reception. The Milton Club for January 16th, 2019, for Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 10, we have a motion for the Board of Selectmen to approve a letter to extend. Do we want, I, I see that there's a, this potentially could end by the end of this week. Do we wanna still send this? Or the, Mr. Feeben, the lead in this, you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, everything's expected, until it actually turns, and I followed that story, too, when you read that article, and you know, you, we want the agreement has worked out, but up to and until it actually happens, I think it's, you know, full steam ahead, kinda stay the course.
Okay. Do you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
One sec. I move for the Board of Selectmen to approve a letter to extend the non-emergency national grid moratorium that expired November 17th, 2018 indefinitely. Second. You want to go to discussion first, or you want to say, go ahead?
Yeah, so, and due to discussion, so I agree with the substance. I told Tony beforehand, I didn't have the time to, to make some suggestions. They're form and not substance. So.
And what subject are yours?
Not mine, but, you know, like, if you want. So, I mean, like I said, if you wanna go ahead with this letter, I think in substance, it's fine. There's a few things that, that I would probably tweak on it. Just, you know, more form than substance, but, you know, I don't wanna stand in the way of progress.
Did you wanna go over your changes with us?
He's gonna watch.
It was, it's kinda like that.
Oh, it's all, okay, got it.
It's just kind of, it's just, Tony and I did it before, on the letter, we kinda worked it out.
We did.
And if you want to, Tony, that's fine. If you don't want to, it's, like I said, it's more form than substance. And, I mean, more, yeah, more form than substance. So, so we can go ahead, or, I think, essentially, there's two routes. We can either, we can, we can approve the letter, either way, and then we can just, you and I can work over the next day or two, and maybe kinda tweak it a little bit, or, or we can just go ahead with it the way it is.
Well, without getting too much in the weeds on it, and the effort to keep the meeting moving forward, what were the, the, some of the major edits that you had? And I'm asking the question mainly because this letter is almost identical to the one we submitted November 17th, with a couple of carve-outs, or additions, rather, revisions, if you will. So, I'm not sure what.
So, so, for example, I would just say, at the beginning, that I would lay out, I would kinda, I think the, the headline is buried. So, I would just say, you know, "We write to follow up on our letter dated October 18th, to do this," et cetera. You know, it's, and again, it's more form over substance, but, and so I'm not wedded to it.
Okay.
But, but, you know, I leave it to the board. If we wanna go ahead with this, this letter, I'm, I'll, I'll vote to, to sign it. But if you wanna, you know, go back and forth over the next day or two, and maybe try to improve it a little bit, and spark it up, then I'll do that, too.
I'm, I'm in favor of just submitting it the way it is, in the effort of keeping things moving forward here.
Anyone else? If that can.
No, I mean.
Just a good brief review.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what you're, you're saying about being.
I'm fine either way. I'm, I'm.
I am, too, either way.
We simply extended the dates indefinitely, and we had a carve-out for the point that Richard brought up, which was, this moratorium does not extend for people that lost heat.
Right.
The other thing, too, and I, I do think, hasn't the DPO lifted their, I thought I heard, where that, the DPO's lifted their, right, their moratorium, right?
Kind of different conditions, which almost effectively makes it still a moratorium, because it's such a high bar to get over.
I'll do whatever you, you, do you wanna?
I'm, I'm, you know, if people are fine with the letter as is, I'm fine with it as well.
You're sure?
Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too much into the, into form over substance.
Any other discussion? We have a second? I don't have a second yet.
Yeah, I think we seconded. No.
No, no one seconded it? No, we didn't get to that. We got the motion, but I don't think we seconded it. Second, was there a second, Jen? You think I seconded it?
Yeah, Tony made it, you seconded it.
Oh.
Okay, any further discussion? You all right, Katie?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay. Item 12, discussion approval of DCI's letter regarding the Traffic Commission. We all have a letter here, dated today, to Commissioner Roy.
About 11, sorry. Mr. Chair.
You don't have it?
Oh, no, 11?
11.
Sorry.
Vehicle use policy. We just didn't have a red box on it.
I was, I jumped right on, okay, so going back to 11, Michael had made some edits. I just gave him, I'm fine with it. I just, there's just two procedural warrants, and I, we can do that after the vote. Just, one is on number 11, which is, just, it, it just talks about out-of-state use, and, and just in the fleeting world, especially in, you know, the mobile criminal, especially in a major investigation, they could be out of state, two or three in the month, in, you know, like, very short. I just, I just changed from chief of police to accordance with department policy, MPD policy. And then the only other one is on the special circumstances. When I had originally written, and I think this even predates before Michael was on the board, when I talked about Mass Journal, our chapter 40 H E, which is, that doesn't just apply to, it's police, fire, especially in DPW, all three are covered, which is the sharing of resources and personnel. It is very likely, and does happen in the real world, that personnel, even within internally, I just explained on, one of our vehicles, you know, they're not, they are, an entity, our municipal provider, but they're not employees of the town. So, those were the only, I just wanna be sure that John's counted that that would cover, that, that we're addressing that, when I, other than that, I'm fine. I'm fine with it. So, I'm willing to move this now, just pursuant to any comments or final comments on this. And I'll give mine to Jen, so she can. Anybody else before, we'll entertain a motion. Are we good to go on this? We've been talking about this for two years, so.
I have no comments.
Okay. Take a motion, I'll take a motion on it.
So, I'll move to approve the vehicle use policy as amended.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, now to 12, which is the discussion approval of a letter. Okay, now to 12, which is the discussion approval of a letter. This is December 26th letter here, to Commissioner Roy of the DCR. This has been a, for history, this has been a long-term issue involving an intersection that, that two roads that are Oz Milton Street and Brush Hill Road, and the Ponsett Valley, which is under the, Parkway, which is under the jurisdiction of the DCR. The Traffic Commission, going back to when I was chair, has been trying to work through this for at least six years. I did see Commissioner Roy's recent suggestion to you about making Brush Hill Road a one-way from, which I think is an unfair burden, especially to the number of residents that live on, on Brush Hill at Fola, too, because that would make, so for their CVS, the Walgreens, and the Starboard Shop on Truma, which they are primary users of, just for them to make that visit would involve left out of Fola to Brush, up to 138, left on 138, then left onto Ponsett Valley to, I just think, I don't think the Commissioner was seeing that. I don't think he was seeing the reality of the use of the road versus his theory of the use of the road. I just don't see that, so.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to change the whole traffic pattern there to be safe, because it's not safe to get out of there and make a left turn.
So I'm comfortable with this letter as it is now, and any, are we, any comments? Will entertain a motion, and we good with it as is? We'll sign it today?
I am.
I'll take a motion on it?
So I'll move to approve the letter to the DCR regarding Traffic Commission recommendation of the Traffic Commission recommendation, which was approved by this board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, item 13, this is the approval of the MPEG contract extension. We have a motion for the board to approve the, as we know, they're on an extension now. This one would, dated October, will extend the term of their current agreement up to and including March 31st of 2019.
So I can, I can speak to this a little bit. The reason for the extension on MPEG is that we're waiting on Comcast, and we've had a little bit of delay over the last few weeks. Our consultant's been tied up in some other communities, and so he's, he's going to be focused on us, I think, over the next week, and hopefully we can, we can get this, get the Comcast, both the dark fiber agreement, which we've been working on, and the license teed up for this board, I hope, within the next two to four weeks. So that's the reason for this. This, the MPEG agreement is really contingent on the Comcast agreement.
I got that, and you've said that, you've said that, really, so. Anybody else? If not, will entertain a motion to extend this contract?
I'll move to approve the MPEG contract extension pursuant to Section 2 of the agreement between the town of Milton and MPEG dated October 20, 2008, to extend the term of the agreement up to and including March 31st, 2019.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 14, there's a discussion on our 2020 budget, with the floor is yours, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you. A bit of an overview of the Select Board budgets that they oversee. It starts at accounting alphabetically, auditing, consolidated facilities, council on aging, fire, historical, information technology, inspectional services, MEMA, police, public works, retirement, unemployment, and veterans. There's a wide array of services that are provided, and this report directly to the Select Board. The last time we met, I talked about some of the larger ticket items since the recent development with a bonding issue and the operational impact that's going to have for FY '20. We've kind of scaled that back a bit. We have a department head meeting on the 7th. Everyone has been giving their marching orders to start taking a look at reducing some of their asks. I can go through this list of asks. Consolidated is looking for another $5,300. It may sound menial, but it's increased cleaning to this building, Milt Public Library, and the Council on Aging, which are three of our most traveled buildings. Accounting Department, they are mandated by a GASB actuarial valuation every two years. That's a $9,800 increase that they're looking for. Council on Aging is actually a lower budget than last year. They had a positional move, and the new employee committed a lower level. So we all know all the good things that go on at the Council on Aging, and to be able for them to, you know, almost level fund their operation is quite an achievement. Fire Department, a couple of the three larger ticket items is Chief Grant, we renegotiated the new three-year contract with Chief Grant. They are asking for $55,000 for training with respect to school safety, technical reshu, and fire investigation. There's also a $75,000 ask for equipment purchases. Individually, they didn't meet the Capital Improvement Committee's threshold of $25,000, but collectively, it's about $75,000 between communication, firefighting, and personnel protection equipment. The IT Department is looking to replace one of their servers. They do it on a triannual basis, and one of the servers is up this year. That's a $9,300 ask. Milton Police, they have the parking enforcement officer ask, which is approved by the Personnel Board. Additionally, for the first time in five years, they've been asking for an increase in goods and services to the tune of about $15,000, and new equipment to the tune of about $3,700. And I know I'm going through this quickly, we can have a question and answer portion after that. The other ticket item is legal services. I believe this board received Murphy Hesse Tumi Lahane's request for increase in their retainer and hourly services this coming year. That translates to about a 7% increase year-over-year. What was level funded at $371,000 from FY '18 to '19 jumps to 397, but overall, it's a 7% increase. We're starting to dig deeper into the revenue side of the budget. Town accountant has level funded the local receipts until we get a better picture from the governor on January 18th and 19th, and basically took a three-year average on a lot of the receipts that we've, thankfully, we've done a very good job with local receipts over the past couple of years, be it motor vehicle tax, local meals tax, stuff like that. We've updated the pilot to include the increase from Curry College. Expect that going forward. Obviously, we're speaking to the other agencies. Trash and recycling, we started negotiations with one of the disposal facilities the other day about negotiating that contract for another five years. We are additionally putting an RFP together that we'll be rolling out as well, but we...
For pickup?
Yeah, this is, this is both for hauling and disposal. But just an overview of the Select Board budgets and some of the asks and impacts of those asks, should the funding be available.
Any comments?
Mike, do you know when the last time Town Council made a request to increase their retainer?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
FY...
My first, my first year.
FY '18, sorry.
Do you know what that, do you recall what that increase was?
I believe the retainer went up $5,000, and the hourly went up $5 from 205 to 210. They're asking for...
So two years ago, they were at 60, they asked for a request of five, an increase of five.
Yeah, and the 65 to 75 ask for the retainer this year.
Okay. Okay.
So there's still a lot of moving parts, especially from the revenue side. We didn't anticipate this bonding issue, so we've asked everybody to sharpen their pencil, and there'll be a meeting of each of the department heads, myself and Assistant Town Administrator, to get some, some of these asks. Quite honestly, we might not have the funding for them.
I agree. And what I'm, I'm seeing how we're gonna do it.
So we're unbalanced, again, very conservative with the revenue estimates at this point in time, but took a little more aggressive approach by asking, budgeting a little more on the revenue side for motor vehicles. Quite honestly, I've said this before, it's amazing to me that 4% of the town's revenue comes from motor vehicle excise, and each year, we continue to outperform ourselves at that. A lot of it falls to free cash, but we're starting to be less conservative with that estimate, because quite honestly, it's pretty flat and rising. We haven't seen that dip that we saw back in fiscal year 14, so it's been a steady rise, you know. 2012, fiscal year 12, the town collected just under $2.9 million in excise. We're now up, up over 4.2. It's, it's the new vehicles you see in town.
New cars.
A lot of leases, Town Treasurer enlightened me, a lot of people, when they renew their leases, they move up to a higher vehicle. So that, stuff like that, we're trying to estimate a little more actual and less conservative. The Building Commissioner, seeing some permits come through the door this year, they seem to still be pretty steady with home improvement type stuff, and obviously have the Pulte Project, which should accelerate this year, and some other ones, if the Henrys Project starts to accelerate, we can anticipate some increased permit fees from there, so.
All right.
Still touch and go.
Any questions? Anyone?
You may have covered this when I was out, but on the law budget, the Finance Committee hasn't looked at this one yet. I was hoping we could take this up on the floor, mainly the professional services line, which is moving from, what, 300 to 315? I just want to see whether we're comfortable with that number in terms of litigation, that's outstanding. And maybe we could get, for the Finance Committee, just kind of a breakdown of where the, where that's been spent in the last couple of years.
Certainly.
Yeah, I had asked, called Mike, and he offered to get bills, but I thought I should talk to you first, because you know law better than I do, so, that's great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else? You good on that? We, we're all good?
Yeah, I think so. More to come.
I'm gonna go right into your report, if you have anything else.
Sure, a couple of things. Most of you probably heard the trash and recycling trucks out there this morning. I was one of those people running it out the door as they came up the street, but there is no delay in trash and recycling this week.
They were early. They were very early.
And it's a very busy week for them, obviously, with all the recycling. So that's one thing. The Milton Yacht Club, hats off to Selectwoman Conlon, we went back and met down there with the Historical Commission on the 14th of December to take a walk through and see what can be done to mitigate the depreciating status of that building. I was very enthusiastically joined by several members of the Historical Commission, four or five of them, who are actively leading a charge to make sure that that building gets the attention that this board has identified. There's actually a more formal walk with an inspector that's been hired. Consolidated Facilities has some money in his budget to hire an inspection group coming in on January 2nd at 10:00 AM to do a formal inspection of that building, and just basically give us a laundry list of things that need to be done. And just to follow up on that, we'll be putting a letter together from this board to the Mass Historical Register to try to get this building on the register. The letter has to come from this board, it gets submitted to that agency, and from there, Steve O'Donnell and the Historical Commission can then start looking for grant funding for some of the repairs to that building, should it get on the National or Massachusetts Register. And lastly, I just want to thank Senator Timblety and his office, as in communication with his office regarding $30,000 for street hockey infrastructure. It's something that I heard loud and clear from many members of the community. The Parks Commissioners are bringing in a couple of the advocates for street hockey in town. They run a very informal but very effective league up at Cunningham in the tennis courts. Cunningham thankfully allows them to use those tennis courts, but looking for a permanent home on Parks Department property for this infrastructure. You put it in once, it stands the test of times. It's simply just some hockey boards and some nets, and it, other communities, they're very well-used, so. Thanks to the Senator for that, and Parks Commission's going to follow up on that on January 15th.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. So I don't really have anything in my report, I don't see future agenda items, someone will go through, just a quick update. I thank everyone, particularly the subcommittees for their work. This was definitely a good idea, having subcommittees, it's a way to, a lot of non-agenda items that aren't on a regular meetings, addressed on a regular basis, and that's important. Just a reminder, on Thursday, January 10th, Urban Land Institute, ULI, their technical assistance panel will be here all day on the East Milton Project. That begins at 8:00 AM with a meet and greet here at Town Hall, and then goes through the day at the Gavin and your Packet. There's an email from Lauren. Couple of things, we're pending a conference with the Audit Committee, Powers and Sullivan on 1-9. We have discussions with John Thompson and John Flynn on the Sewer Betterment Project, that's pending, that's also for the 9th. Our 9th meeting, we'll also have an executive session regarding the Governor's Stoughton Affordable Housing Trust. Go ahead.
Oh, and should that include an update from the Housing Committee at the same time?
You want to do it? We'll put it on, you want, are you ready for that? If you're ready, it'll go on.
I think we're ready.
Yeah, you ready? I think so, okay.
We're ready. It doesn't have to be anything long or involved, but...
I know a place for hay park nation, that'll be for MLK at Concord Baptist, that's gonna be on on 1-9. Capital, to Michael's point, will be coming in in January to make their recommendations. We have some committees to reappoint, several, and other than that, I think we're good. I do worry, I will say, I am, that capital thing caused me some consternation. It's like, it's, it's like, you heard how many, I was writing notes, I was like, trying to figure ways out, I just, just, we have to, that could be a real problem for us trying to move forward, and just look at the challenge we saw. The school budget is significantly higher than it was last year. We have some challenges ahead of us, but other than that, I'm all good.
Future agenda items, just two. One, and, you know, we try not to react to the media, but the media story out today is about Somerville restricting the sale of vaping equipment and electronic cigarettes for minors. And given what I understand through just rumor, that that's expanding in our community as well, among young people, it's, I think it's something we should probably look at, maybe have the Department of Health make a recommendation on whether we should consider restricting the sale of vaping and electronic cigarettes to minors. So that's something that...
Do we have, before we went to 5, they did come in on this. You don't have, so why don't we, let's go, why don't we put them on the agenda for, I don't know, put anything else on the 9th, let's go off something later on, January, last Caroline coming in.
Came to mind, just because of, and then the other thing is, we talked briefly, just making sure we get the youth task force consideration of adding a park commissioner, that's, shouldn't be a long discussion, just a couple of issues to talk about.
Only because of the 9th, I've loaded so much on there already. The last thing is, you just, you just made me think of something. There's some correspondence we got from Mike on Friday on an issue, I think we're gonna have to have some discussion on that, the case, the case last week. Everybody, everyone got that, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to have some discussion on that, sooner versus later. Prior, we had talked about it prior before we went to 5, just the, should we be in that as far as next steps? Should that case, depending on how that case goes.
Oh, litigation strategy, yeah, executive session.
So, yeah, I'd say we want to put that on, I don't want to do it for the 9th, but maybe the 23rd, we won't put that.
Might have room on the 9th.
I think the 9th would be better.
All right. You think you want to get it sooner versus, okay.
The only other thing I have is John O'Rourke was planning on being here for energy aggregation.
I got that, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't receive any comments, but it would be part of the public hearing process and next steps. I think he takes the ball from here and runs with it with the Department of Public Utilities, so.
That's all for the 9th.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else? Good?
Nope.
Katie?
I have no report.
Tony?
No, sir.
Motion, Jen?
Seven minutes.
Happy New Year, thank you all, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Hey, we got, I know, no one, I'm sure we're regretted waking up this happy company, but we got a lot done, so I thank you all for that.